I'll be in the order at six o'clock. That's what I've got. Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Shanta, here. Ms. DeDeutsch.
Here.
Ms. DeBrer.
Here.
And you're missing Ms. DeDeutsch. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Ms. DeBrer, pardon.
You can do this, I remember what I mean.
You're good fun.
Alright, please do report the blocks.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a reprieve into justice for all.
Thank you. I implore approval of the agenda.
Has there approved the agenda?
Yeah, I'd like to make one change, if that's okay. Heard earlier that the contact that SMC wanted to have this item continue to our next meeting, to give them a little bit more time to prepare some changes to the contract. With that, I move that we approve the agenda, removing item C from new business. And continue to go, and continuing it to our next meeting. Okay, let me second him. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passed. Moving on to approval of the minutes. Is there motion?
I move you approve the minutes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous as well. Moving on to item six, committee reports. Starting with the Economic Development and Tourism Committee.
We still have to schedule a date for return to do it around the month of October, so we'll get done once we get back. Once Josh is done.
Moving on to, excuse me, the Finance Committee. Has not met since our last meeting. Working on the budget. Generally, I would expect that we wouldn't have a meeting for a month or so. Unless there's something specific that your plan had.
It'll probably be mid-year. Probably be January.
February, January.
Certainly, January.
Alright, next is Public Facilities and Services. This committee has not met since our last meeting. The Airport Committee.
Well, we had a meeting last Thursday with the FAA. It was done with us being in a conference, Mark Waris being in a conference call, and with Richard Dinges and of course Carol Ford, our consultant representing us at Lake Tahoe. And so they've laid out the plans that we're looking forward to for the years to come. And right now, we're going over that. And how would you put it, at this point in status?
The main thing, probably the biggest thing that we're talking about was the capital improvement schedule going forwards. And one of the things that you and I were wanting to really get in the open was the asphalt branding as a new kind for our percent of the program administration. So that's still being looked at, and we're still hopeful that that will be the case.
Yeah, so what he's mentioning here is that basically, we have received in general the pavement management plan, which was half of the contract. But half, there were two plans we had to do this year to make the FAA happy. One of them is the pavement management plan. They've come back and they've analyzed our situation and found out that on a scale of one to 10, our runway right now is at about a three. And they've come up with a large figure, which they're looking at for a couple of years down the line. And with that large figure, we believe we've come up with a way to provide our match without taking any money out of our budget. And the way we found to do that is, is that we've learned that with the new specification from the FAA, that we could use grindings from freeways, et cetera, as incline matches. And we've calculated it, worked with the consultants, and we believe that we can provide enough grindings to match the incline we need to have.
Bruce, just to clarify there, so the grindings would be donated to the city, but then we can use them, they have a value.
Exactly.
And that value could be used as the monetary for the project.
They haven't decided whether we can or not.
It has not been decided.
I understand that's what you're hoping for, but yeah, that's how.
So basically, the grindings that are going on up and down here, every time you get caught in traffic, you can smile a little bit, because it might make us a little bit of money. We're expecting to get about $80,000 worth of grindings from the state. And we have a place to put them up there by the airport. And the specifications are part of the process of getting changed by the FAA to make that reasonable, so we're just waiting for approval. But the bottom line is that we think we found a way, with the help of our consultants and our team, to be able to make a major upgrade of the city, receiving over a billion dollars' worth of financing, not having to do any zero-dollar matching. So that's what we're excited about.
But wait a second. We already got a loan to do the matching.
It was for last year. We're talking about a project that would be coming up in two years, not this year.
What happens to those if the FAA doesn't approve?
Yeah, we'll cross it, we're gonna come.
Will there be a huge amount of filings?
Well, we may not even take the filings. So that's something we'll have to figure out. The encouraging aspect of this was they, while they didn't say that they would accept it, they said that they do know that it's something that's been put into the standard specifications, and that they were going to look into it. So there was nothing discouraging about the conversation. But that was something that Bruce and myself were wanting to make sure was up front and center, that we're counting on that to move forward.
And of course, if we don't get it, that has serious ramifications through the airport, et cetera. So we just have to deal with that as we find out more. That's all after the airport.
Thank you, Bruce. Moving on, the Emergency Plan Task Force.
No, it's not met, isn't it, fact? And Bruce, I have to put a reminder here as to what's happening with FEMA. We're gonna end up not being sent to work again.
Did you need to?
No, we haven't.
Alright, moving on to the Veterans Memorial Committee.
I know they're reporting that right now.
Moving on to the Mossbrye Trail Committee. The local committee hasn't met since our last meeting. But I will give you guys an update, as far as what I know. Essentially, the Mount Chastel Trails Association continues to be a great ally in this project, and has worked very diligently through some of their wonderful volunteers. Joe Worth, Tom Hesselbens, and others there to do a couple of really important things. One is, we got, the Trails Association got a large donation of money that they're going to help out with the project in some way. We were hoping that that money might be used to persuade, to do a purchase of land needed for the trail. At this point, it looks like that is unacceptable to the St. Germain Foundation. They are not interested in selling any pieces of their land. We wanted to make one last-ditch effort there, but they respectfully declined. And so we're exploring an idea of a west-side trail, along with Union Pacific, and they have been extremely helpful as well. They, the departments at UP, their safety officers, along with their engineers, were here in June for a site visit. And I've talked about that in the past, but communicating with their real estate department is a different matter. And so what the Trails Association is doing now is putting together the surveying work to create a proposal for UP to say, would a trail on the west side, getting people off the tracks, so they don't have to trespass, down close to the river, which is still UP property? Would a trail there, you know, in UP's mind, that trail's way too close to the tracks? But right now, people are on the tracks. So it's better than being on the tracks. And so the default position from UP Real Estate is probably gonna be no. But there's mitigating circumstances here, where we think that they'll be open to the proposal. So all the meetings have been really good with UP and the Trails Association, and we're working to submit that proposal to them by the end of the month, so by the end of next week. Who knows how soon we'll hear back? But should that go well, we'd be in a position, because of the donation, the private donation made to the Trails Association, to begin environmental right away on that, still no cost to the city. And potentially have monies left over for construction as well. That trail on the west side wouldn't be as ideal. It couldn't be as wide as what we could do on the east side. But it's very encouraging, and you know, I don't want to get anybody's hopes up. But I think, I continue to be very optimistic about the project. Hopefully, within the next year or so, we'll have safe access in Mossbrye Falls. Okay, moving on to the Broadband Committee. There was a meeting that got canceled yesterday.
Oh, we had it.
Oh, you guys met, but the call was canceled today, sorry.
Can I take it?
Yeah, go ahead, Bruce.
So the basic situation is, is that we're near the end of the contract. And when I say "we," I'm talking about the cities of Mount Chastelweed and Dunsmere are near the end of the contract that we had with CTC, which was a consulting firm out of Washington DC that we pre-contracted with to analyze and study the possibility of bringing fiber to all homes in the region. We are in the process right now of facing the last deliverable that'll come out of that contract, which would be a request for information, which would go out to various providers, et cetera. In the next couple of weeks, we're gonna meet as stakeholders. The stakeholders are two council members from each city and the city manager. And so it's Mayor Craig and myself are the two stakeholders from our city. We plan on hopefully getting together on a Saturday to sit down and go over all the information that we've received and develop a strategy, how we want to go forward as a region. So for right now, we're still in that midst of gathering information, analyzing, and deciding what we want to do. But we're encouraged, and we'll let you know more as time moves on.
I am I, the Beautification Committee. Tim? Tim's the chair of our Beautification Committee.
Our beautiful chair.
Our beautiful, wow. Beautification.
Good, a little malarkey thrown in here. So, as you know, our committee decided to tackle, to have two types of projects. One are the relatively immediately doable projects, and the others are the more ambitious projects. So in, on the first category, which are public benches, as I think you know, we installed our first bench on City Hall. We are working on the second bench, which will be in front of the library. And we'll have more about that further down the agenda. And let's see. So, and I just want to add to that, that, so the idea is to actually have something on the ground that people can see as an improvement. You know, even as simple as a public bench. And again, in the second category, I want to ask Bryce if there's anything to report.
Yes.
On your project. And that's the, what you call a mini, kind of a mini-part?
I've advised not to call it apart. Only because, so the update is that I, that the council was gracious enough to grant the mayor the ability to send a letter to the UP Real Estate asking about this project. This is a small beautification project that would be down at the north end of the UP-owned parking lot down there on Sacramento Avenue. Not the lot that you drive down to for the Amtrak depot, but the lot just above that. The north end of that, the idea is to move the town fountain, the Alexander Dunsmere Fountain, back down to that location, which is where it originally was in the city, and rebuild the fountain structure around it. And of course, put in the plumbing, hopefully, to have a functioning fountain down there. And create a little green space downtown with maybe a couple of benches, not a few benches, a couple of benches to watch the trains. And there's already some beautiful memorial dogwood trees down there for Rita Green and Tony Scalco and other important and worthy Dunsmere citizens of the past. And I think it'd be a nice place, a nice little green space. So it's a simple, small beautification project. Problem is, the Union Pacific grower owns the parking lot. And so I haven't heard back from that letter, but I was able to interface with the UP's public affairs person when the council, we were at the Lakers Conference, Cities Conference, and met with Francisco Castillo there. And he's supposed to put in a good word for me with UP Real Estate, to at least get a response back. And he said, "Don't call it apart, because parks next to railroad tracks, they don't fit on like that." But if I'll do a beautification project, then it may be okay. So anyhow, we'll just stick with beautification project for now. So unfortunately, nothing major concrete. We're still waiting to hear back, but hopefully some products.
Okay, good. And as you also know, we have the government at Centennial Plaza functioning now, thanks to Bob Reverend. Bob? And well, we gotta give credit to Public Works, right? City Public Works on that. And I think Bob has a brief update on that plaza.
Here's the next meeting, tell me.
Who is that?
October 4th.
October 4th, yeah.
Been looking at the fountain and trying to figure out a way to recreate the middle bowl, because it comes, the water comes down and splashes, and then splashes out. And so returning the middle bowl to it would be, would keep the splashing to a minimum, so it's not sprinkling everybody's stands around it. And so then the other piece is, we need to find a picture of what the fountain looked like back in the day when it was complete, so that we can recreate that bowl. The unknown piece is, the fountain is tilting just a little bit. And so it's, what would it take to straighten that up? Or it's 131 years old, so it's like, maybe, I don't stand up quite as soon as I used to. But that is things for next year. The current thing that we're all, that we're discussing over Facebook and one-on-one is, there's a lot of people who are interested in having a live Christmas tree planted in the park. And so it, I see it as going in where the, I hate to say it, but the dead Christmas tree gets put every year. And I need to understand the finances of what it takes to put in the dead tree every year versus what it would take to put in one live Christmas tree that was, say, a dwarf of something, instead of getting huge, putting it in, and then letting it grow for 10 years, and then maybe we're moving at putting in another one. And so we're trying to figure that out. I sent a text, an email to Mark, and to see what that costing, that would cost. And I understand from some people that it was a free Christmas tree, a free tree, that we're getting off of individuals' properties. And so that wouldn't cost much. But dragging it down and then shaving the base down to put it to the plastic drain hole, I understand is very difficult. And so would it be easier to just buy one tree and then plant it permanently and allow it to grow until it's too big without breaking up the, 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 concrete? The concrete, yes, thank you, of the, of the plant. And so that's where we are on that. And so if anybody has any history and would like to email it to me or fax it, or give it to me in some way or another, I'd be greatly appreciative.
Thank you.
Thank you, you have one more.
Yes, then, that's okay.
Yes. Yeah, so you've got October 4th being the next meeting.
And what time do we meet? We have a meeting.
I think we meet at four o'clock. Yes. Okay. And we have just one brief report. It's news to me about some improvements to the town clock.
Brad Morris, he was a volunteer that he would paint the clock. And he's been doing a lot of research on it. And he found out the original company that built the clock. And they sent him all the information on the paint color. So he has a paint color, and there's a place in Chico that sells the paint. And it'll be a dark green with gold trim. And we have to find an artist in town to write Dunsmere across the top and do the gold trim up on the top. And that person has to not be afraid to get on ladders. So that might be a problem. But it should look absolutely gorgeous. It's really nice, Brad, volunteer. He paints cars, so he knows what he's doing. So it should be good.
Does the city need to purchase the paint?
Yeah, I have the invoice.
Oh, okay.
Considering how much we spent to renovate that, the cost of painting is minimal.
Someone told me the other day that that clock used to play music as well?
Yeah, but the box was left in the main. And he has never seen it. So I think during the cleanup, it's just been glitched.
Because I remembered the same thing. I was like, he's really spent like $7,000 for a new clock? And that didn't include the music. Who knows how much it would be?
That box has disappeared.
You can play your own music. Alright, moving on, thank you, Tim. So October 4th at 4:00 PM in here for the next Beautification Committee meeting. Alright, last committee report is the Marijuana Task Force. We met last Tuesday.
Yesterday.
Two days ago.
Two days ago.
Here, we meet every two weeks right now. And last Tuesday, two days ago, we looked at, so far we've been talking about cultivation, commercial cultivation. We split up the topics of marijuana, of cannabis, into four or five different high-level categories. Retail sales versus commercial cultivation versus taxation versus manufacturing and testing. And we've been sort of trying to go from the biggest part of the funnel to the smallest part. And so we started with cultivation. We've had four, five, six meetings or so now. We wanted to, before the last meeting, have a little bit more structure to the meetings and try to be, try to actually consider specific types of regulations that we wanted to see or didn't want to see. And so we used the City of Chastel Lake ordinance that they passed last year. Or it was earlier this year. And just went line by line through the ordinance to try to figure out what types of regulations we want. So I think that was probably our most productive meeting and we really got a lot done. And so I'm hoping that that has now focused our committee a little bit, and we'll be able to move through the other topics somewhat quickly in the next couple of meetings. And so I expect to have either something for the council to consider or something for the planning commission to consider with regard to a new ordinance or a changing of our existing ordinance. Hopefully soon, maybe within a month or so. At least something to consider. Maybe not addressing every aspect of the supply chain, but one specific thing is taxation. I don't know that we'll get to taxation at this, at the end of this year, but, but unless we wanted to do a special election for that anyway, we wouldn't probably be putting that down until November of 2018 anyway. So I think that allows us a little bit more time there.
Bruce?
I have a quick question, Mayor. So in terms of the January 1st calendar date when the state law kicks into another level, are we in any negative position? Because we probably won't have anything concrete by January 1st?
I don't think so either. But I hope that we will have an ordinance by then. Who knows? But that's, you know, there are entrepreneurs who want to take part in this industry that would potentially be shut out by the state for a year if we didn't have something in place. At least some sort of local authorization to at least classify the type of industry as an approved use. But I don't want to do that before we've actually considered the types of regulations that we want to see. And so this whole process with the task force has been to figure out what the community wants, and then figure out how to implement it. And I think we're starting to coalesce around a consensus of what the community wants. And so hopefully, we'll be moving towards actually considering the ordinance soon.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, moving on to announcements in public comment. We'll open the podium of the public comments. This is a time when anyone can speak about any item or any matter, but not items that are on our agenda tonight, because those you'll have an opportunity to speak on directly. So take it away, Bob.
Barklorn, 6/11, 7/11. The topic I wanted to bring up is maybe seeming a little pasty now, because we're not talking about it right now. But it's still a matter to think about. We still have to look at storms, lightning, fires, et cetera. And this happens to be about, something that I see as fire danger. There's some property above Butterfly Avenue, on the other side of the river, that actually faces my street. And there's a lot of rubble, mostly from trees, that needs to be cleaned up. Now, the reason I'm specifically interested in that is because if that catches fire, it comes right over the river. And I had the experience last year of discovering burning embers on my property that came from Butterfly Avenue, from the fire over there. Not just my property, but quite a few houses on that street. So what I would like to suggest is that we look into cleaning up that area, which belongs to the city. It would be really easy for the city to clean it up. And I brought along a couple of sheets of paper, which I will happily give you, so you can see what I'm talking about, because I hate standing up there talking. One?
Thank you, my man.
I think I have enough, I don't have enough. So you can see from the map, use your imagination. Where they can in, and if there's a fire over there, it goes whoosh, like that. And since I found these embers on my property, and I know it's a bad, and I walked around several weeks ago, before our smoke got too bad to walk in, and I talked to a bunch of the neighbors over there, and I got a lot of signatures from people who were aware of this. Unfortunately, I had to bring the copies of the signatures tonight, but I will get them to you. So is there anything? I don't know if I have all the answers, but you get the idea.
I think so.
Okay. Does it sound like something we ought to look into, guys?
Yes.
Out loud?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll address this when we have our public comments.
Yeah, we're not supposed to talk magic.
Yeah, this is public comment time. I appreciate this.
Okay. Okay.
Hi, I just wanted to come introduce myself. My name is Zach Kushner, 4755 Dunsborough Avenue now. I am the project manager for all of Mark Warren's properties. I've been here for about a week and trying to. Zach Kushner. Yes. I've been here for about a week assessing. I realize it's not exactly an enviable position, but I'm very excited about all the possibilities within all the buildings that he owns, as well as working with the community at large. My background is in community development, particularly in the arts. I worked in New Orleans after Katrina, helping rebuild. I lived in South Florida for a long time, helping smaller communities that become destinations, become more of a destination with an emphasis on the arts entertainment. I really look forward to meeting all of you and getting some more input from the city as to what we should be doing to move quicker. I have my own ideas, but again, we know we're a part of this community. And just really excited to be here and working with you all. That's.
Thanks, Zach. Is there any other public comment? Okay, we'll close the podium at this time for public comment. Let's go ahead and start council announcements or comments. Anything from staff, Mark?
No, not from me.
Okay. Madi? I'm going to make sure to get to Sergeant Merrill. Madi?
Thank you. Again, I'd like to commend Bob for getting that front. I know it's getting a lot of commentary and all of it is good. I would like to also just let the city know that all of us, except for Josh, who's manning a fire. We were all at a pretty large conference with, you know, a lot of cities were represented there. I had a chance to sit with quite a few of the cities in impromptu little meetings. And then, yeah, we had scheduled meetings. And I find that Dunsborough is a little microcosm of everything that is happening in California. The major three topics of conversation that I was pretty to, all dealt with. What do we do with cannabis? What do we do with code enforcement? Which is a major topic for most of the cities. And this whole situation with Airbnb's and vacation by owner rentals. From large cities to small cities, it didn't seem to matter what size they were. They all have the same problems we do. So we're not unique in that, which made me feel like, okay, they're not handling it much better than we are. So in that regard, it kind of reaffirmed my faith that we're not such a small community that our problems are unique. It was pretty interesting. Conference is the first time that I had participated in it. I'd also like to commend the river cleanup. I hear it was a major success. Can't participate in those type of cleanups at the moment, but when I could, I remember that. I'm always appalled at how much trash is just thrown into the river. Other than that, I'm waiting for when Sergeant Merrill gives his report as to how the weekend went on the traffic down to Mossbury.
Bruce, first of all, I'd like to commend Councilwoman Chanta. I thought that was a nice summary of the conference. And I think it was an opportunity for the five of us, if you count Councilman Heisler, the mayor, myself, Dishanta, and the city manager, also our finance director, we're all there. And I thought it was a good opportunity for us to get together and get to know each other better and learn what foods we like and don't like, et cetera. One of the things I do want to point out is that it doesn't really get a lot of attention, but we are working, several of us, a lot of us, behind the scenes, trying to find ways to do economic development, to grow the city. I will say, one of the biggest challenges that I find is the idea of housing. And so we're looking at every way we possibly can to encourage developers, development to come into the area to solve the problem that we have to solve before we imagine moving anybody here. So if we were to get a company right now with five different people employed and their families, we wouldn't have a place to put them. So the three different projects that we're looking at, if anyone knows out there, in fact, we did get a couple of nibbles from somebody who knows somebody. The three areas we're looking at, obviously, the Travelers Hotel. And actually, there's a little bit of a buzz going on there, but that happens periodically, so I'm not too overexcited about that. We're also looking at the House of Glass. That's up for sale. It's $250,000 or so. And right now, we have that zone, if you remember, a year or so ago, the council zoned it so that we could use it for affordable housing. And so the person who had owned it for a while, we thought was going to do something, never quite did, ended up putting it on the market. We're hoping to get somebody that will find and see the value of that property and find a way to bring us some housing. We're also looking at developing the area west, I'm sorry, east of the airport. The 80 acres that came with the county, with the airport, when the county gave it to the city. So all in all, we're looking at various projects and we're talking with various people. And we do have some feel-good leads right now, but I just want to let you know those things are going on behind the scenes. The last thing I want to point out, I'm not sure if anyone's heard this or not, but I just learned this earlier, that Ray had Linda Keller's son, Chris, was killed in an automobile accident. So. It's the principal of the high school. And so my condolences, I'm sure the condolences of the council and the city staff go out to Ray's family and everybody else who suffered that loss.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, the council. Thank you very much. Just kind of wanted to share a little bit what was going on. Obviously, I kind of missed the last couple of meetings here and there. Hopefully, I'm able to get back up to speed. But I do appreciate your kindness and I will do that. Just want to share with you some statistics. I'm always getting questions about, they boil down to what is the sheriff's office doing for us, the city of Dunsborough? And was that right, Anna? That's correct. See you later.
I know what you mean.
I appreciate it, too. We want other people to know, too. And every now and again, I get the opportunities to do that. Council is kind of going to give me a few minutes, probably about eight or 10 maybe, to be able just to share with you what's been going on. I'm getting the mic signal, I think, here, so let me try to. Hopefully, everybody at home can hear now. Thank you very much. So I wanted to be able just to share with you some of the things that are going on. So beginning with the fiscal year start, of course, July 1st through the 31st, the end of the last month, there were a total of 845 hours of service dedicated to fulfilling obligations and roles of sheriff's office, to meeting the needs of the people of the city of Dunsborough. That is a lot of time investment that the sheriff's office is pleased to be able to continue. And we think that it works out very well because our relationship with the city continues to grow. And these signature pieces that show that that is working effectively keep popping up all over the place. Something everyone will be talking about a little bit later as well. We spent a total of almost 3,000 miles driving around, patrolling alleys and back roads and front roads of the city of Dunsborough. And if you're interested in how many laps that is around Dunsborough, all you have to do is drive around one day and try and hit every street without duplicating it. And then divide that to really know how many laps that is. So a little homework challenge for you. We had six felony cases. We had 11 misdemeanor cases, and there were 11 non-criminal cases. These are cases where there was either a signature event that happened, that a criminal investigation was done that either didn't meet criteria, or it simply needed to be documented, maybe a traffic accident for insurance, excuse me, insurance purposes, something like that. So quite a bit of paper writing, quite a bit of courtesies doing that. There was one felony arrest, and there was 11 misdemeanor arrests. There was a total of 23 citations that occurred in there, of which nine were for speeding as either one or part of the other elements. I couldn't completely separate them to just speeding, so the closest I got was nine.
Could you pause and say then that you can clearly say that we are giving out tickets to people?
I can tell you that nine people got tickets for speeding. So I don't know if they're going to stand up and admit it or not, but there were nine tickets, of course, that were given out during that period of two months that had to do with speeding was at least one of the components.
Only eight of them were mine.
There you go. Now, we only have to figure out the other person. We can do that. There was 91 security checks. These would be checks that officers, deputies do. They're either checking outdoors, behind businesses, whether it's transient checks, whether it's suspicious people entering around the business, after hours, during hours. There's a lot of different variations that we do on that. Some people think that we just kind of walk around at 1:00 from the night and check back doors, which is true. But that's not just what we do. A lot of times, it's walking into the bars, checking with business owners. It's just cruising around saying hi to people sitting on a bench across the street. They get really weird looks when people walk by. Or different things like that, just enjoying those kinds of things. There were a total of 410 events. These are non-criminal events that we had some participation in support of the city of Dunsborough that's not going to other things that we've already talked about. It could be dogs, it could be parking, it could be assisting with code enforcement, it could be assisting with fire, or medical, or performing just a security function to help. Everything from fire trucks back into park to anything else that the sheriff's office is deeply involved in to help kind of facilitate going on with the city. A little bit of those other numbers, just to kind of break them down for you. During that time period, of course, there were four assault and battery calls. There were seven different alarm calls. These are both home and business calls. There was three calls where we assisted with either animal abuse or animal neglect. And that could be either simply giving people the right resources, maybe contacting with Ryan. There's a lot of different ways that's involved in there. Nine different assists for other agencies. That could either be fire or medical, with a number of different ways where we help support the agencies that are in the city of Dunsborough. We did have one auto theft. There was a series of bar checks, three particularly, where we intentionally walked downtown, spent time walking in the bars at different points to see what's going on, just to say hi, shake hands, all those other kinds of things that we like to do as well. There were 10 different burglary calls. These were everything from cars and sheds and open doors and garages. There's a lot of variation. The idea would be that somebody took something they were supposed to get. We unfortunately did have one child abuse report. There's a lot of different variances on that, of course. There were a number, of course, disturbing the pieces. And this is everything from music, the loud noise, the chainsaws, the cars. 22 of those that occurred in that time period. Two specific drug calls, which were people under the influence of intoxication of either alcohol, drugs, and/or a combination of things. There were six domestic violence calls arranged for everything from people arguing and yelling and screaming to physical fighting, kind of running that old gambit. We did, too, have two calls that dealt with elder abuse. That's arranged with whether it's physical, a lack of care, or fiduciary, a fight against abuse. It covers a broad range of those. Two different embezzlements. Believe it or not, we actually had a couple explosive calls that just had to deal with old things that were found, that were discovered that could maybe blow up. And of course, our bomb team was able to come in, help remove those things, and ultimately destroy them safely. So we didn't have any more surprises in the middle of the night. A couple times, we helped out fishing game. There was three different grand thefts that occurred just because of the volume number. Three calls specifically dealing with mental health. These was someone who is at a particular distressful point in a situation, whether it's a lack of medication, no medication, they're finding themselves in between, or they're trying to get introduction in the system. For many people, they don't understand that the sheriff's office is kind of that precursor point for someone that is having a mental health issue. That we transport them to the hospital where they can get a medical evaluation and start a mental health evaluation, then they'll be accessed that system. Seven different misdemeanor calls, one missing person, and they were found fairly quickly, so that worked out really good. There were also 27 non-misdemeanor calls, non-criminal calls. This could be everything from people asking for help on how to pick the neighbor, how to seek address of whatever grievances, how to fix tickets, and how to settle all those kinds of things. We do a lot of stuff. There's a lot of things. We only got a couple more items, so we'll be able to do that. There were 12 different checks where we just go out with people. People walking down the street, maybe we don't know, maybe they're up to something and we're curious. We just simply stalk, engage that person. Hey, how you doing? What's going on? Are you okay? A number of those people are people traveling through, are people that just look like they're in some sort of distress, maybe directions. There's a lot of that outward involvement. We were able to participate in two different probation searches. This is where probation department calls us. They are coming down and they ask for our help because we have a little better local knowledge and understanding of the people and the circumstances and assist them with probation searches. Five different petty thefts. There was 24 specific directed patrols. These are people, either people speeding the area, kids riding their bikes, dogs running loose. Whatever it is, there was concern that people call us to express about things that are going on in the neighborhood, that people are directed to that area to examine that, to see what we can do to create a solution for that. 36 different security checks. Six of them additional specifically deal with schools. These are ones that occurred during school time hours. These don't include the ones that we do after hours of patrol checks and back. This is literally going to school, talking to the office, maybe checking in on a classroom here now and again. Some sort of a directed wall, which is not a criminality necessarily, just to make sure that people see that we're around. There were a couple sex offenses. There's just more, subpoena service, traffic accidents, trespassing, vehicle stops, sentimental and warrant service, welfare checks, events. These are all the different things, 10 pages, which is a normal court, that the people in the city of Dunsborough receive as a service from the sheriff's office that we're very glad to be able to provide to you. That we think that this is a very good contract for us. It's a very good relationship that we've built out. We talked about some of those specific things. These markers, these jewels that come up that show how well that relationship is occurring because of the way things work out. Dishanta asked about the walk that was supposed to occur. Number of people gave me information that they saw on Facebook that there was a gentleman from City of Redd because he's trying to get 1,500 people to join him at one time to do a walk on the tracks to Mossbury Falls. My response was almost exactly the same, Ted. There's been times where I've been patrolling check, which we do quite often. Probably at least twice a week, I make patrol checks. They end up in three or four citations for people parking down there. I started to look at the numbers and quickly kind of grossed in there. I bet you I myself have probably read close to 40 citations that I know other officers are the same from people continually parked out in there. So when I thought about how many people and cars and all the traffic, if you don't know how many visitors we have in there on the weekend, purposely go slow down Dunsborough Avenue and look, and you'll see the cars that looks like there's a Friday football game, except they're parked just slightly north. They'll come from Chester Street as it drops down, all the way down through to almost the tentacle gardens. And sometimes, they will park in there as well. Luckily, as the information was sent to me, I started making law enforcement contacts. First one, of course, was Union Pacific Police Department. And specifically, their technical responsibility of what happens on those rails, including trespassing and safety issues. We provide a lot of help to them because we're here. A major event, it's, of course, their responsibility. I also reached out to the city manager and other city assets. We were able, excuse me, to work with Public Works, who was very gracious to help us put up other parking signs and things like that, to clearly let people know areas they could park and where they should not park. Luckily for us, as I learned in the very early morning of Saturday, that Union Police Department had, Union Pacific Police Department, had called this gentleman. And based on their conversation, he decided not to come and do all that we've done. Luckily, the group was around 90. If everybody who said they were coming actually came. And he chose to hopefully have a beautiful hike up to Castle Lake and Hart Lake. The idea, though, is that information is flowing constantly because there was a relationship. Assistance, taking home, absolutely. Things get done, things get placed very quickly, very smoothly, very easily. The benefit of the city of Dunsborough, without a lot of friction, a lot of tape, a lot of other really work. That's a signature response of a relationship together that works well for groups of people. Some of those occur in other ways. You may have noticed that last week, we had a traffic collision coming northbound Dunsborough Avenue, just past the cemetery. Somebody hit a main power pole. At first, you don't realize it. When you look up there, it seems like everything else in the world is connected to that pole. The only way they could fix it in the middle of the weekend was to park one of the large boot service trucks on that triangle pyramid, and the arm was literally grabbing and holding the pole up higher to secure it. Quickly and easily, we were able to get extra cones and barricade that off. There were some folks who would kind of park there, which would normally be fine parking. But because of the extra space required for the truck, we simply made a couple contacts. People were absolutely fine. We'll certainly move my car. They moved it to the other areas so that roadway could maintain open easy. These are signature uses of relationship contacts, not just because the cops are in town. We had dive training that came up last month. We had four, two dive members. And we had trouble finding a place to be able to use a confined water space and pool to be able to do that. After we had tried some other areas, I told our other dive commander, I said, I know where we can get some help. I called the Dunsborough Rec District. Quick phone calls, the mics, and absolutely, we can use our pool. Ron LaRousse says, absolutely. We were going to close it down the day before. We're going to keep it open a couple more days so that we can use that. We were able to work half the day to pool, to test out the new dive training. It was all about relationships and work ability, not just mere presence. Lab on Tuesday, in fact. Deputy Wetstein was able to go up to Dunsborough High School and talk to the senior government class. The partner of their senior class is working on transition from a school kid to kind of a on-your-own adult as they become 18 and start going to school. a on-your-own adult as they become eighteen and start going to school classes. They're talking about things about entering contracts and how to find apartments, but also life experiences. What do you do if you get stopped during a traffic stop? How should you conjecture yourself with wisdom that doesn't create a problem? What happens if you get arrested? How does the legal system work? How does the sheriff's office come to be a part of the city of Dunceberry rather than a police department? And all these other kind of things. Deputy Westine was able to spend about an hour up there at the invitation to be able to talk to the students, work within the school, to be able to enhance, hopefully, their education process with real-life examples about what they see every day as they're going back and forth to school and working around. Next week, of course, talking about the school, is the homecoming parade on Friday, which we're going to be able to participate in. So around, around noon time, if you start hearing sirens and everything like that, and you're not already outside, just start waiting for the kids, find a path down Dunceberry if it goes up, that way you can wait for the homecoming parade. Also, obviously, when we had our hillside fire, one of the things that I think is a signature of the relationship that the sheriff's office has and the people that actually work share familiar obligations, I was gone. I wasn't around for the fires, but when I got back, I checked in, of course, with Dan. He was just almost gushing with accolades. He says, you know, when that happened, I immediately just started calling people, and then everything was just happening like clockwork. The deputies were here helping out issuing notices, knocking on the door, straining people out, drag transportation for people. They even stayed well past their shift into the early morning hours of the night to make sure all those functional pieces were happening. Those are signature of the smooth relationship and workability that is within the sheriff's office of people that you have here in the city, not just simply fulfilling those contracts. If there are ever questions that you have about how those things work, please come find me. Sometimes I'm not always sitting in the office. There are a lot of times where we're out here generating these kind of stats. If you see my car up there, come on in, most people do. You might have to wait in line, I think Anna's had a couple different waits in line, but eventually we'll get a chance to talk. You can always call up and leave a message, and I'll reach out to you. You can leave a note to Julian City Hall if we're not around. There's lots of ways to reach out to us. Thank you for your, of course, you know, I see any questions to the council that hopefully didn't, didn't cover well.
We did a good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sergeant. All right, I just have a few things before we continue on with our agenda. I wanted to just ask Barbara's question about here, is, what's the status of our Fire Safe Council? Is this something that they should be looking into?
Our Fire Safe Council, the town president, that's already mapped.
Okay.
Sergeant, the fire chief, and we have a wildfire, wildfire, and all of that is mapped. Clearing, yeah, by clearing, clearing land costs money, grants are brighter. That's where we're at. We are so small, getting a grant, that size, it's almost impossible to get.
Perhaps we could run a small tier or something to...
Well, I don't, I don't think that that's really a great idea, but it's certainly possible to look into areas that this is mapped, you know, steeped. It just happens to be, you know, owned by the city of Dunceberry. The fire department alluded to Butterfly was a fire, actually on Butterfly, where a house went up in flames because of the people that lived there. Unfortunately, the structure right next to it was also, you know, which one I'm talking about, yeah. And it was pretty intense fire, and that's why embers, you know, went across the, across the river. But it's one of the reasons why I want to make sure that we have a presence with the county mitigation plan, and there were signatories in it, because when I talked to the two ladies that handled the grants were very receptive. They know what a danger of Dunceberry is, and the fact that we guard the river, the I-5, the railroad. And then we found out that we're not signatories, so we're not eligible for anything. But they were quite willing to help, because that's exactly what they're there for, is to mitigate fire dangers, but we're not signatories, we can't participate.
May I?
Sure.
So, it sounds like the Fire Safe Council already has this property on their radar, but you said there's...
Yeah, they have the idea of this too, and we have all of this sorry brings.
But there's no plans to do any sort of cleanup there? Mark, do you know if there's any other avenues that we could pursue to try to coordinate some sort of debris cleanup there, or filling with fuel or something?
Would it be an interest to the lobby? I mean, maybe get them to come in and help us? I don't know what the area is.
It's, it's, when we cleared out the ten acres of the city owned down at South Dunceberry, people went in there and took out usable logs, but Cal Fire just basically burned it all up, burned it all up. The area that this is talking about, it looks a little too steep to even get a chipper in there. You know, the Blackberry Hill was one of the grants that Fire Safe Council did have, and part of it was chipped. I don't think there's a fire, I don't think Cal Fire put any fires up there, but they'd have the participation of the homeowners on Blackberry Hill, and, but the last time that we just did, just city property was the eleven acres down on South Dunceberry. And that cost a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, well, Mr. Mayor. I know that there are times where CCC, the Conturbation Corps, does do some work in that way. I'm not sure about the specific project, but that might be something that may be able to help in some management.
They do use them.
Yeah. Also, another county swap crew, what our day reporting center is doing more of those types of things. Again, I don't know about that specific project, but that might be, I can at least provide some help, even if this is just in a measured way.
Is this something we can look into? Excuse me.
What's called swap crew?
Well, it's a slang for swap crew, it's through the day reporting center, and I can get those people, so you can contact them. They're the people that you see in the side road, picking up trash. If you're up in Marrikin just before the central part, they split wood, they give reduced prices for seniors, slips, there's a lot of different aspects of it.
Is this something that, is Barbara, maybe you can, I'm not familiar with the property really, but is this something that there's just debris in the underbrush kind of that needs to be, or is there, you're talking about the density of the trees need to be thinned as well?
I think most of the trees have been cleared. What's left is what should have been taken out and is still there, brushed, brushed, but the things people couldn't take as large as firewood, whatever anybody didn't want.
Slash.
Yeah. It's, can I ask, what do you mean that we're not signatories? What does that mean?
The city of Dunceberry and the city of Montague never signed the last county mitigation plan, and Arlene and I found out we're attending a FEMA meeting where...
Is there anybody resolved that?
Well, it never got resolved, and I have to admit that I am behind. I, Arlene and I have tried to contact FEMA to make sure that we're signatories, you know, on this round, and the, we went to whatever meetings we were notified, and I don't know what's to be happening, Bryce, to be quite honest.
Okay. Well, this is something I'd like staff to look into, see if there's a way to get, if there's volunteer groups that can help clean up that brush, or, or if it's, you know, our own fire volunteers do training or cleanup in some way, let's, let's just at least get this on the radar of some people who might be able to help us out. Okay? Can we break staff through that? Okay.
It most likely be a event in the spring. I don't know, do you know where the crews would do that type activity, or?
I think they're open just based on their schedule. I'm sure that the more time they have, the better they can to kind of restructure for crew size and equipment to all those kinds of things.
Just whenever you find out somewhere, just, you know. I also want to just thank the River Exchange for organizing the river cleanup. I heard it was a really successful event this year. Twelve hundred pounds of trash removed from our beautiful river. So I want to thank, thank the River Exchange and all the volunteers that helped out with that. When we were down at the California Cities Conference, it's also an expo, and there's all these vendors there that are trying to sell the city a bunch of stuff. One of those was a service that, at least for now, is free to cities and developers called Opsites. I don't know if you guys saw that. But they're basically a group that, it's real estate, but they, they connect cities and maybe other types of entities, but mostly cities and counties, with development, real estate that they want to have developed, connect them with developers. So I recorded a little video saying, you know, what's your vision for the city and that kind of thing, and that'll go up on their site, and then you can go in there and get an outline properties, and they actually have, have you guys ever used like Endland's parcel viewer, parcel map viewer? It used to be free, now it's not. Through Opsites, they have a contract with somebody that has the parcel map data, and you can get all that free again if you're, so the city can be a part of that. I signed up for it as, as mayor, but they, anybody from the city can be a part of that. So I'll make sure I get the information, you, Mark. But we can go through and outline, so I put on the travel, well, I was right there and I just put on the travelers, I know this because it came to mind, what we can do, House of Glass, we can do the airport, you know, various land, if the city wants to see that developed, which I think we do, so that's another avenue that we're, we're working on, which will be good. Next, I just wanted to say, let's see, oh, I mean, we don't have the trail of Mossberry Falls yet, but should we just put parking meters down there? I mean, there's so many cars there all the time. It's crazy.
The best one I heard was not parking, but a turnstile.
Great.
The bodies would be with the car. I don't know, you'd have to talk with UPO.
Okay. Well, if we put parking meters there, it may seem like we're encouraging people to go there, but I mean, it's not even near the falls, it's way down.
It's a long fall.
I'm just saying, pretend this conversation's going to happen, let's put some parking meters. Let's see, finally, the, oh, there's two more things. So I know, I'm sorry, Mark's on call, but I know that he wants to do a visioning, sort of, maybe development of strategic, strategic plan or vision sometime in the next month or so, so I think that's a really good idea, hopefully they talk about that before the end of our meeting, or maybe set, maybe even set a date for something like that. And finally, code enforcement. Code enforcement is something that we hear about all the time as members of the council. It's probably the thing I hear most about from the citizens, you know, trash and nuisance of amen, and broken windows and things like that. But we have essentially no budget for code enforcement, we have very little budget for code enforcement. We just went through the whole budget process, so we know exactly how much money we spend on that. We're trying to find ways to be able to spend some more money on that. One idea that we had, well, is it okay if I talk a little bit about some of the stuff we learned at the conference?
Yeah, it was a really interesting, we had all three of us having to be in it.
Right. So, there's two somewhat, a small thing and a big thing that we learned about code enforcement that hopefully we can, tools that we can start employing at the city. And then there's one other idea that Mark and I sort of kicked around, which was to try to develop a regional approach to code enforcement, much like we do with sharing a building inspector with Mount Shasta. We potentially could share a full-time or maybe multiple full-time people to do code enforcement on a south county sort of regional approach. The more we can share resources with the other cities who have bigger budgets than we do, the better. So, it's something I want to look into. So I invited the mayor of Mount Shasta, the mayor of Weed, to Dunceberry to meet and to talk about it. That's going to happen, I think, the first week in October, we're going to get together. But Kathy Moore, the mayor of Mount Shasta, expressed a lot of interest in it because they're struggling with code enforcement too. It's a budget issue, we got to, we got to figure out a way to fund it. Perhaps through some sales tax on marijuana, we can someday fund code enforcement. That's what the city of Shasta Lake has done, and they've got more money than they expected to receive through that initiative. That said, the two things we learned at the, at the League of California Cities Conference was, I don't want to belabor this too long, but the main problem with code enforcement is that you won't recover the amount of money that you spend to do it. So it's just, it doesn't break even. So if it, you know, even if you are able to find the person, the person doesn't pay, then you have to take them to court, there's legal costs, and it ends up being more than the price to do the thing, to just fix it. So, and the city is advised a lot of times that it's not worth doing, not worth the legal cost. That answer is the answer that we always get, and is always frustrating, and, you know, frankly unacceptable to a lot of us. That said, how much do we want to really spend on it? So there's two things that have sort of changed. One is we learned about health and safety receiverships. So this is something where, where if we can prove a health and safety code violation, essentially, we could actually get a court to put the property in a receivership, which would, which accomplishes two major things. One, it actually gets the property cleaned up, and also it doesn't put it into some sort of foreclosure situation. It's not like, it doesn't go to an auction. Instead, it actually, the receiver has the authority to hire the people, fix it up, bring it up to code, and then sell it on the open market, not through some sort of foreclosure system. So it keeps thirteen property values intact, and hopefully, that's an avenue that more legal minds are starting to explore, and so it's something we're going to ask our city attorney about. There's a couple of properties we might have in mind for things that could be, could be done. Obviously, our first, that assumes non-compliance, right? That assumes that the person isn't complying with orders to fix up the properties. So it's something that, the best case scenario is, here's, here, here, violation of our ordinance, fix it, and the person fixes it. And generally, that does happen. Most people do commit to compliance. The people who don't, though, and we've had a history, and all cities struggle with this, but it's something that, there's a, there's a couple of tools that we are not know about, and hopefully we'll be able to use soon. The other is, rather than putting a lien on the property when they don't pay the fines after the work's been done, which we were always advised, like, you know, you never recover those monies, it's possible that we could change our ordinance to instead of do a lien, to do a, called a special assessment. The difference between that is, a lien only has to get paid back for the property itself, but a special assessment actually has to be paid that tax year. So it actually forces the issue with the property owner. So that's, that's something that I think is very effective, again, for people who don't want to comply with our codes. We maybe now have some tools to move forward in this. That doesn't mean we have the staff to do it. So I still want to try this regional approach to see if we can get some more attention on these matters, but I was mostly bummed out about code enforcement, and then I'm a little bit less bummed out about it now, so hopefully we can have some progress. I think that's all.
Can I add something to that? On that meeting, I really, exactly everything that Bryce said, and having a regional code enforcer that would spread out the cost, but also that, actually, there was an attorney that was leading this meeting, and he was really great. We all have his card, we all want him to work up here, but it's that code enforcement seems to work better if it's under the fire department, because the fire department is charged with all these health and safety issues, and they have the enforcement capability of carrying it out. And I think that thing is a shock to quite a few of the little cities, that if they put the code enforcement underneath the fire department, it was more effective.
All right. Well, that should do it for announcements and reports from council staff. We don't have no presentation, we have no presentation. Item taken since agenda, is there a motion to adopt since agenda?
I'm moving ahead, sir. Gentlemen.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that was unanimous. Moving on, we have no public hearing, we have no old business. We're going to move on to item thirteen A, bench location library.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item, I've received some emails from the certification committee, in particular Mr. Holt, and we've worked with Mr. Holt in trying to identify where the bench, the proper locations of the bench at the library. Uh, and we've worked with Mr. Holt in trying to identify where the bench, the proper locations of the bench at the library would be. Uh, our Public Works supervisor didn't know some issues with slope. Um, and, uh, Mr. Holt was going to meet with the, um, Friends of the Library to discuss some of the issues that were discussed by Public Works and Mr. Holt, and come up with some ideas on how to address those issues. So, uh, as soon as, uh, you're ready to open it up to the public, he'll give a presentation about what the Friends of the Library discussed. Um, and what we're looking for, what I'm asking for right now is really, uh, if the president, if what Mr. Holt has to say is something that we could possibly work with and the location is acceptable, um, there's still things that we have to work through. But if you can approve the location, uh, then it would be something that we could work within staff, knowing that at least the location's approved. If, our concern, of course, is, uh, the safety, you know, the tripping hazards, that how do you adjust for the slope and, uh, you know, making sure ADA access is on the sidewalk and plowing. All those things will need to be worked out. But once those get worked out, if it's okay with, with the staff, then we would give the okay if the selection, the location approved.
Are there any questions from staff at this point? Tim? Actually, we'll have a public comment on this, we'll start with Tim, but it's open building.
So, yeah, I agree, uh, with, uh, city manager's presentation. Um, I think, I like the idea of a general approval by the council of the location, and then we work out the details with staff. Uh, I think the only thing I would add is, um, we did have a, a subcommittee, the Friends of the Library, do a, another site, you know, after our meeting, basically. And we've identified two spots, uh, in particular in front of the library that we think deal with basically two issues. One is the slope, and the other is snow removal. And we have two, uh, spots that, uh, are pretty level. I'm, I'm not gonna go into detail, you know, but they, we, they're pretty level. I don't think there'll be a slope issue with them. Um, the only thing is that they, both of them happen to be close to the curb, so that brings up snow removal. So our thought, just briefly, is that we would simply remove the bench, uh, before snow season and put it back, you know, after the snow, snow period's over. So I think that deals with most of the issues.
Is it just sort of like a bolt drilled into the concrete?
No, it's similar than that. It would be a, I think, a cable.
Cable it around the tree or around the bolt.
Strong, a strong cable with a lock, basically. A very simple to install and actually remove as well.
But the, but the, the bench would be just freestanding otherwise?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, is this the bench that we have in front of City Hall that the council approved?
The, uh, and the, the person who's going to purchase the, the bench is here. I'll let her speak to that, Ann Powers.
It just depends what kind of bench we can get through Lowe's. If we get a bench, when I went there last time, and then we maybe have the season now, they have the kind of like they've got to put in front of Sam, and, or they had that kind. They also had one that looked like the one Tim got, only it probably wasn't quite as sturdy.
Well, the, the council has only approved one type of bench, so if it's not the same bench, that would have to come back to council.
Okay, um, there?
Not your fault.
Good job. Sorry. Um, I'm kind of remembered, we, we presented two bench, two benches.
Right, there's two benches, but only one got approved.
There was one, well, the first one I presented was rejected from Lowe's.
Yeah.
My recollection is, and I could be wrong, is that, yeah, the one we have in front of City Hall was approved, um, but there was another one that was a little fancier design.
Right.
That we ran by the council, um, and I, maybe there was not a formal approval of it, but I think that's the one that, that we haven't won.
Probably just ordered the one you got. It seems a lot simpler than having to go through all this stuff.
All right, she's also, you just heard, willing to order, you know, we can order one from Barco Products in Illinois also, if that would, if that would be more acceptable.
It's, it's off to the beautification committee. We have one that's already approved.
Right.
Gonna suggest a different one, it'd have to come back to council, so it's up to you.
Okay, um, well, um, can I make a suggestion here? Um, along the lines of what you were, you were saying in your report, that, um, does the council have to approve the designs? And that we're gonna, we hope to have benches, you know, in many different locations, not this season, probably like next season. Do you think it's necessary for the council to approve, in addition to the location of these benches, to actually approve the design of each one each time?
You, you mean, like, I'm not sure what you mean by the design of the bench.
Well, let me, let me finish the thought, I didn't quite finish it. So, in other words, rather than coming before the council each time we're gonna put a bench, say, in front of, you know, a business or whatever, um, to me, it makes more sense for the council, as I think you're doing now with the library, saying, yes, it's okay to put a bench in front of the library. And then we work with staff on the details, which could include whether the bench is acceptable, you know, whenever. Does that, does that make sense, or?
Well, it'd be easier for staff if we keep it as simple as possible. If we're gonna work together, our basic concern is, is safety. Um, and one of the things that, when you start talking about, uh, you know, people that have challenges or children that may be rough on things, is, is a bench secure?
Right.
Uh, so that if kids are jumping on it, or, or, you know, all these different issues, that benches are gonna fall over, or that it's not going to collapse.
But stepping back from that for a second, what I'm seeing is that, yeah, all these things, as we've kind of been doing already with the library bench.
Sure.
Are things that, you know, in this case, the Friends of the Library work out with you and Public Works possibly, you know, Bill or whoever. Um, and that it does not have to, all this stuff does not have to be voted on and discussed by the council once they've just made the basic approval of a bench location. That's, that's what I'm suggesting.
I, I would recommend that if there's gonna be something significantly different, or, or in this case, a bench, if you're proposing a different bench, um, work with staff to get the staff recommendation, yes or no, and then it would go to council and get approved. Once it's approved, then it's a location, right?
Okay. Let me just say, Tim, I, um, I would, I think ideally, we, we, I'd want all the benches to be consistent anyway. Um, you know, for an aesthetic sort of consistency of the benches that we place throughout downtown. Um, I mean, not that, not that that one is particularly, you know, there are other fancier designs, I understand that, but, um, but there's, I'm more concerned with the durability and the lasting safety of, of the thing. The last few seasons, hopefully, or more, um, if we're gonna spend four, five hundred or a hundred dollars on a bench, you know, uh, they're not, they're not cheap, so, um, I, I prefer it to have to be consistent, aesthetically. And if that's the approved bench, um, I say, let's go put some more of those out, you know? Um, and it makes it easier.
Okay. Well, I think in the immediate instance, we just heard that Ann is willing to purchase the same, the same bench at City Hall. So in a sense, we're not, you know, we can, you know, shorten this discussion, at least for tonight, and just say that's what we'll go with.
Right, so the city's already approved that style bench.
Right.
So, um, then it's just about placing it in a way that makes sense.
I saw Billy yesterday, and he's, I told him the spot we were thinking of, and he said he had already gotten that specific spot.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes? Please come to this, so everyone can hear. Thank you.
I think you indicated that you liked the idea of the benches all being alike, and that's exactly what I would not like to see. The thing that's charming about this town is that everybody has a unique face. When you look at the homes and gardens and everything, and to put a bunch of benches that look like they all came out of a press, I think would be disastrous. It wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't beautify it.
Disastrous?
Yes, disastrous, because it would destroy the idea of the town.
Okay.
I don't think we'd do a thing to beautify it. One bench like that is fine. A hundred benches like that is awful.
Thanks.
Ann Amolmane, um, I wouldn't say disastrous, but I would say in the name of art that we wouldn't want cookie cutter benches. I mean, it's a good theory, but, um, this is an arty town, so I don't think we'll go too far off the mark to have them be different, just as long as they're structurally sound. Um, in my, my house, we, I had had this bench, it cost eighty-nine dollars at Ace Hardware, and it has lasted through three houses and tons of snowstorms and rain. And so this expensiveness, I suggest you go to Ace and sit on their benches. Mark, and see if you think they might be, um, seriously sturdy enough. I have wondered if they, they are the nicest benches, but they're seasonal. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? Okay. So, we're being asked to approve the location? What's the location? It doesn't say here.
In front of the library.
Okay, that's, that's all we need to know? We already, we're gonna approve a bench in front of the library? Yes, Marnie?
Can you speak to this?
Yeah.
Okay, I have some thoughts I would like to share.
Okay.
Before we decide on anything, I happen to agree with both. I happen to agree with both Ann and Barbara. I think a whole bunch of benches that look the same, and not my idea of what I would like to see downtown. And my recollection was when the, the very first branch I agree, I was, participated in the naysaying, because I happened to have that bench right on my porch, and it was just, you'd get two kids on it and bounce on it, and it's gone. But the present bench that was installed at City Hall also came with another design that came in red. My recollection was that we approved both designs now. Mark, you know, says that we only approved one. My recollection was that we approved both, they were both sturdy. The only problem, yeah, the only problem with the red one was that it did not have any kind of feet that you could bolt it to the cement. And seeing as the library one now under discussion is that they would remove it during the winter, and it's not going to be bolted, seems to be adequate, but, uh, you also remember that it was two designs that we approved, and I think a red bench there would look fantastic, and, you know, gets taken up during the winter, so it doesn't cause problems with the, uh, snow plowing, and gets put back in the spring. Um, I also would like to speak to this idea that, that maybe we consider, you know, uh, since this is something that is going to happen quite often, that we just allow the staff to work with the proposal as to where the placement is going to be. Do we really need to approve every single site where a bench might go into? You don't think that the beautification committee that is working on this hasn't considered that? And as long as the waiver of the property owner has filled out, do we really want to get involved every single time on this? I would prefer not to.
Um, my concern with regards to different benches is simply the idea of durability. And, uh, so, um, I, I think that the reason that the council would want to get involved henceforth beyond this would simply be if, if there was a, a desire to add another, um, bench to the approved list of benches that we reviewed. Um, because, uh, we are charged with trying to figure out the best use of the resources. As far as the, uh, location, I agree with, uh, Bishata. I agree that, uh, there's no reason to, um, continue to look at the locations. We did that initially, just with the idea in mind, that we were trying to see how the pilot program would go out. But, um, you know, beyond this point, I would also would agree that leave it up to the beautification committee and the, uh, city manager staff unless anything unique comes up.
Any motions?
Can I add just one?
Sure.
Well, in regards, I just want to clarify the, the two benches. Uh, there were two benches that were brought to City Council, but the motion that was made in, in seconded and passed was just for the one bench. Yes, if, uh, we can bring it back to the City Council.
Uh, wrote it.
Yeah. So if the council would like to reevaluate the other bench, we can bring that back as well.
I wouldn't.
If I remember right, wasn't the red bench with the little design, and there's like a bird on it or something? And that one was from Lowe's, sorry? Or, that one's from Lowe's, and it was like a hundred dollars. And the other one was, the black one, is like four hundred dollars. Um, but there was some concern that the, to me, that red one, while it looked nice, also, and, and I was looking at a photocopied scan in black and white of a bench, they told me it was red.
If I remember right.
But it was, it looked much less durable than, than the other bench. Just because the, the piping isn't a stick, and it didn't, you know, so, um, regardless, you know, if, if we want to look at approving other bench designs, great, go find some bench designs that people are more happy with, and, and the council can approve them. Um, but in terms of the locations, I agree that, you know, let's, let's, uh, let the beautification committee recommend some locations to staff and authorize staff to approve them. I'm fine with that. Is there a motion?
Can I just, one other thing? Is, as far as, I know it's frustrating, and I'll address the audience, to where you want the diversity. I agree diversity is a beautiful thing. But the concern in, in government is, is about liability, it's about protecting the public. When you have to meet to in public's safety, it is a whole new ballgame.
In the meantime, there's a real public safety problem down by the deck of the spout.
Yes, we have them everywhere. That's just another thing, we don't want to add to what we already have.
Would you like to speak to any of those?
Um, we, we, technically, no, but sure. Come up to the podium, we'll reopen the podium until they're coming. Anna, no more shouting out, thank you.
I don't know, this could potentially make everybody happy, or just makes more work, but, um, I've worked with a couple of cities that do public art projects. Last one's Pompano Beach, Florida. We actually create these giant fish heads that we then brought in artists, and they each got to decorate each one. Um, there was even a fundraising component to it. If there's a bench that is able to be painted, or maybe the benches can stay the same, and maybe we can find, you know, some local artists, or even bring in some artists. That way we'd have the same bench and the issues that you're dealing with, with, you know, durability or whatever, and still we would have the art and, you know, color that maybe, uh, the town is looking for. And it could maybe be a way to, you know, get people excited about the project and a little bit of the PR thing as well. I know I'm new, and nobody knows me, but if I can volunteer to help in something, things like this, I'm certainly, uh, I'd love to.
Thank you, Zach.
Sure.
Okay, we'll close the podium for public comment. Um, I had a similar thought, I thought, you know, let's, let's have diverse people sitting on the benches. And get diverse usage of the benches. But, but being said, yeah, let's paint them, paint them different colors or do something, you know, if those benches can, can take a, an approved code of pain or something, that, I love that idea. Make a contest out of it or do something.
Can I, can I add something here?
Yes.
These are all privately funded.
Right.
The city is not spending any money on this.
Right.
So it's difficult to ask somebody that is already privately funding this, oh, well, we want you to paint them now.
Well, no, it's not difficult, we can still ask. I mean, that, that could be part of the program, like, if you want to fund a bench, goes in front of your property, or.
And you have private things that might be able to do that, and it would cost the city a huge amount.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could have that be part of the, the program if we, if we wanted to do that. Regardless, we have a couple of benches out there, or one, another one, so is there a motion?
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we bring back the design. Mark, uh, says that it was never approved, to look at it again, um, soon, because it makes a difference to the beautification committee as to which bench is going to go in front of the library. And that red one seems to be the appropriate one to place there, since it's not going to be bolted into the, uh, into any cement. It's just gonna be. It's just going to be, you know, a cable that's going to be used.
All right, is there a second?
Well, to clarify, so we're kind of breaking this up because we're just dealing with the bench right now, right? Not the location.
Yeah, the location, I think we've approved.
Why don't you turn the motion?
No, we haven't.
Oh, we haven't. All right, do you want me to break up the...
I'll second your motion.
You can do your second motion, okay, so we can discuss. So you want to bring back the other red bench for approval?
Yes, it was red, yeah. Mark doesn't seem to believe that we approved that one.
Mark, in your opinion, if you remember anything about that particular bench, is, can it be locked up or, I guess, not bolted down, but secured in the same way that the other bench can?
Well, that's going to be the conversation is... These things aren't a commercial bench.
Right.
So...
The Barco products one is a commercial bench, so...
I would say it's mid-commercial.
Okay.
And in this case, even if you're getting a bench that's already been approved, how do you keep that from bending over, from falling over? So if you're going to cable it, it has to cable to where it's not going to be, you know, tipped and people fall backwards and stuff like that. So there's a challenge there.
Can I make a quick comment? That, whatever. Would it be possible for to have both benches as options? And the reason I say that is because we haven't recently looked into whether Lowe's is still offering, at this point, the red bench. We know we can get the Barco, the black one. That's a definite. So what I'm saying is if we could have flexibility with both benches at this point...
That's the motion that we're considering.
Is that what you're saying?
To bring back the red bench for...
Also, we can put the black one for the black.
The black ones are...
The black one has already been approved.
Okay, all right, just want to clarify, thank you.
I'll just say, you know, the council could approve whatever bench they want, but they're taking up the liability.
Right.
Okay, we're just going to look at it again. And maybe if we're going to deem it then, well, maybe that wasn't such a good idea to look at it again.
Okay. All right, so the motion is to... everyone understands the motion, right? Everyone understands the motion, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Okay.
I'd like to make the second motion.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move that we approve the bench location as requested in front of the library and also approve direct staff to make decisions on locations in coordination with the beautification committee in the future.
Seconded.
I think you should include the whole, the MOU, whole harmless language as well.
Okay. With a MOU, whole harmless document completed and slow pitch addressed.
Seconded.
You seconded the amended motion?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that was unanimous. I don't think there's any more motion on this item. We're going to move on. Thank you all for your participation in that discussion. We're going to move on to item, the next item, which is...
Startup Weekend.
13B Siskiyou Startup Weekend. Mark? Actually, before we get going on this, hopefully we won't be too long. Can I ask, can we take a five-minute recess?
Yes, right, you can.
Okay, we're going to resume with 13B, Siskiyou Startup Weekend. Mark?
Okay, this is actually pretty exciting. The city council is being asked to do a proclamation or as an alternative for resolution. The Startup Weekend is a Google-backed program where they have, up in City Mount Shasta, where they have kids in high school that have ideas, and they train these kids in how to bring these ideas into reality. It kind of gives them a skill set. You know, a lot of creative people have these great ideas.
Want to just read it?
Yeah.
Read it, do you want to read it?
No, 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 you do it. So it's a great thing, it's a proclamation.
Okay. It says I'm going to read it anyway. I'm just going to read the... So we can do this either as a proclamation or as a resolution. So they're both basically the same language. So we can figure out what to do. I'll just read the proclamation for now. So there's a proclamation expressing support for the Siskiyou Startup Weekend occurring October 6th to 8th, 2017. Whereas Google Startup Weekend entrepreneurial events are occurring all over the world and have helped create successful new enterprises, and whereas the Siskiyou Startup Weekend is a 54-hour event that allows anyone to turn an idea into reality, the event starts on Friday evening when participants pitch ideas. They then form teams around the top ideas and spend the rest of the weekend validating and building their idea, aided by local mentors. On Sunday evening, teams come together and pitch their newly launched company to a panel of judges. And whereas Startup Weekend provides participants the opportunity to be immersed in an ideal environment for startup magic to happen, surrounded by smart, passionate people and the best tools and approaches at the participants' disposal. Participants will take giant leaps toward creating a business, becoming a founder, and connecting with the right people and resources. And participants are likely to leave the Siskiyou Startup Weekend knowing the next steps they need to take on their road to success. And whereas the city of Dunsmere encourages the creation of new startup companies in Siskiyou County, and the Siskiyou Startup Weekend is designed to help people gain knowledge, skills, and confidence to start companies in a 54-hour weekend intensive, and adult and student participants will have access to valuable startup resources to launch new businesses in Siskiyou County. And whereas the city of Dunsmere wishes to express support for the Siskiyou Startup Weekend event and to encourage participation and would-be entrepreneurs in the same. Now, therefore, I, Vice Grand Mayor of the city of Dunsmere, hereby proclaim the city's support for the Siskiyou Startup Weekend event taking place on October 6th, 7th, and 8th, 2017 at the Mount Shasta High School, and encourage other agencies and cities to likewise support the efforts to make the October 2017 Siskiyou Startup Weekend a success for all participants and aspiring entrepreneurs. So...
Question, are there any questions?
I do have a question. The first time I had a conversation with Tim Stirnwell here down in Sacramento, and he was encouraging me about it, and everything I got from him was that it was for adults. The idea of kids is something...
This is probably something different than what I think he...
I thought it was more for adults, so...
No, it's for kids.
It costs money too, to participate.
If you read the proclamation, it doesn't mention kids. It talks about business, people who want to start a business.
Right. You and I are thinking of the same thing. Different is probably different. Here, of course, there's adult and student participating.
Yeah, I think it's both.
Okay, so let's just be clear, though, it does include adults, so...
I believe so.
And I think that's probably aimed more at that, actually, but, okay. That was new, the idea of kids.
The other thing is you can look up more information about the Google-sponsored program and maybe find out the answers to those questions just by Googling Siskiyou Startup Weekend.
No other questions?
Google Startup Weekend. Okay.
No other questions?
No other questions? We'll have a public comment on this item? Anybody want to say, "Don't proclaim this"? I'm about to proclaim it!
Proclaim it!
Okay. All right, is there a motion?
Are we doing a proclamation or resolution?
Let's just do the proclamation.
I'd like proclamation.
Go ahead.
The city council would both move to support the Siskiyou Startup Weekend through proclamation. That's written.
All right, so move?
Seconded.
Okay, and seconded, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right. That pass you, or so?
I don't know, we just passed this unanimously. That sounds to me like they're bringing back something that is more of the generation that Bruce and I went to high school. You remember the Decup program or something where they taught?
You were in a better high school than I was, I can tell.
Yeah, it taught future entrepreneurs the ways of marketing and... Do you remember anything else?
Junior achievement.
Junior achievement, that's it! It used to exist in the high school, and maybe they're bringing it back.
Sure hope so. I remember in fifth grade, I had to do this thing where created a company, and then we had to like compete in the market. It was awesome. This is a little bit more about like startups and actually bringing products, tangible products to market potentially.
Shark Tank.
Yeah, it's Shark Tank, Siskiyou Shark Tank, basically. Okay, we are moving on to item 13... At least, I'm sorry, we continue, I'm going to see to our next meeting. So I'm 13D Short-Term Rentals. Mark?
Okay, this was actually an item that we had Josh and Mandy ask to have agenda, and that is the issue of vacation rentals. So what I did with Julie's, actually, did all the research or investigator, was to really just look into the issue, and we provided some pros and cons to the issue of vacation rentals. And the positive impacts that we found was the short-term rentals can provide the city with additional income through tax revenues. When allowing but regular, when allowing but regular short-term vacation rentals, local governments can increase the revenue through taxes, permits, and business licenses. Two, short-term rental guests will spend their money in other visitor-related amenities such as restaurants, shops, bars, and museums. Three, short-term rentals may be a way to boost the local tourism sector. Four, owners of short-term rentals typically spend a substantial amount of money upgrading the home and yard for the business. Negative impacts, short-term rentals can result in a decrease of long-term housing availability. Two, the scarcity of this creates could eventually contribute to increasing housing and rental prices. Three, short-term rentals can result in complaints from residents about trash, parking, and noise. And four, may be an unfair play feel for traditional lodging. So those were the, what was found through research to see what other municipalities were having as far as issues. Coastal and Mountain seem to be the attraction. Lake Tahoe and the coast areas seem to be places that you can look to. So we were just asked to put this on the agenda, and we just thought we'd give some pros and cons to the issue to get you started.
All right. When we talk about short-term rentals, we're talking about Airbnb, VRBO, basically, right? Online alternatives to traditional lodging, essentially, right?
It's residential homes for short-term rentals.
Okay. And so let me make sure that I understand the issue. One of the issues is we suspect that the Airbnb rentals in Dunsmere are not contributing to our TOT. The city isn't getting any, isn't collecting any TOT from these properties.
We would say from some.
From some? So some are paying TOT?
Yes.
Okay.
I've got some information on that.
Okay. But the concern is that we're not collecting the correct amount of revenue from the TOT. And then also, there's a concern that perhaps we're sort of tacitly, by not doing anything, allowing too many short-term rentals, which adversely affects the long-term housing market? Is that also a concern? Yes?
So what we're looking at here is the difference between a short-term rental which is in somebody's primary home versus a home that was purchased to provide short-term rental only and it's not a primary home. Or theoretically, vacation home that somebody buys and then rents out. So really, I think as far as the places where you're running out of rooms in a primary residence, that simply is a matter of collecting revenue. But in other sense, we're looking at impacts on availability of housing.
And through what means would we limit? Are you talking about passing an ordinance that would make unlawful someone purchasing a home for the purpose of having it only be a short-term rental? Is that...
It could be a zoning or...
You know what, I think that Mount Shasta found that this was exploding. They passed an ordinance that you could have only so many of street or for lawn because too many homes were being bought up and just turned into short-term. Now, this was one of the topics when we were down in Sacramento that, I mean, I sat through three, you know, private conversations, and it didn't matter whether it was a small city or a big one, it just seemed to be exploding all of a sudden. And homes were just bought up, and Airbnbs became really popular. And, you know, not just the loss of revenue, but all neighborhoods just being turned into short-term vacation rentals.
So it seems to me that on the first point of making sure that we're collecting the right amount of revenue from Airbnbs, essentially, we could create, we could potentially create some sort of plan or strategy to fix that problem. The other piece of it sounds to me like, at least to some degree, a land use issue, and so that we would probably need to go to planning commission and get a recommendation, correct?
Correct, I think so.
Okay.
And limit, you know, see if there's a problem, maybe limit how many vacation rentals could, you know, get a permit or a license, you know, for neighborhood or...
I mean, just off the top of my head, I'm generally in favor of not putting, of putting as few restrictions as are needed on people's ability to buy property, especially in a town where it'd be great if people bought up the property in this town. So I want to look carefully at that. That being said, you know, we get to make the kind of society that we want, and if we want to encourage families to be in that house rather than short-term renters, okay, or short-term, you know, vacation type of properties, there may be a way to legally and effectively do that, but that sounds challenging to me, too, and may have unintended consequences. So I think it's something we need to look carefully at. So I would be in favor of probably having the planning commission look at this, at that aspect of it, too. Is there any more comments or questions before we open the comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to explain a piece of information that relates to the first part of it. And I've been checking with Airbnb and doing research. And I found out that basically, in the state of California, we're one of the areas that has a relationship with Airbnb that allows entities within the state of California to arrange with Airbnb to automatically collect TOT taxes. We give them the percentages that we have for our taxes in our location, and the way the program works, it will automatically be taken out. It doesn't affect the people who are renting. And right now, I've got a contact in with the people in the company that facilitate that to find out how we can enroll in that. But that would take care of anybody doing Airbnb inside city limits that would automatically make sure we get the tax funds.
Does that include the vacation by owner?
Pardon me?
Does that include the vacation by owner? Because of this all separate day advertised, totally separate day.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, those are things that Mark brought up. We want to make sure we cover all the different areas, but I just wanted, I'm just saying that at least we have one red industry we can start tapping right now.
So I'm on the Airbnb site here, and it lists all of the areas that I think you're referring to. And I don't see Dunsmere as a city or Siskiyou County as a county listed.
No, it's California as a state. If you look, it lists them all.
Right, but it goes county by county here, and so it says, so like, the first one, Calares County. "Yes, you look Airbnb listings that are located in the unincorporated areas of Calares County, California, will pay the following part as part of their reservation." It's a six percent transfer.
I think it's because we got the razor in.
I know, and maybe that's something we can do. But another statement that I saw Airbnb put out is that some, yeah, I think it's essentially what you're saying. Some jurisdictions, maybe I've worked with them to get it built into part of their system. Regardless, whether Airbnb is collecting it or not, the law is that it needs to be collected, whether it's part of the listing and Airbnb automates it, which would be much more convenient and probably regarded or resulted us getting more money. Regardless, whether they're collecting it or not, they do need to be paid, and like, some people are paying them. So whether or not we get Airbnb to build us into their system, make sure they're collecting it for us, we could also just, you know, contact, we could have a program to contact all of the listings that are currently Airbnb in the city and, you know, tell them to pay their taxes. So, I mean, that's... So I mean, that's...
Well, my recommendation, I'm going to be a public, yeah, but my recommendation would simply be that of reaching out to them and finding out how to do it and install all that stress.
That being said, hopefully VRBO has the same, the same thing.
I don't know, because that goes, you know, by owner.
That's what it's called, but it's essentially the same, it's an online web app that automates that for the, for the owners.
No, because my owner, my neighbor right across the street turned, you know, that house, bought it, and that's what it's become, a short-term vacation rental. And I looked her up and, you know, it's, the relationship is strictly her with whoever is, you know, contracting to stay. And it's revolving.
So Airbnb is unique in that they handled the process and you're saying this is more like a...
Well, no, there is a company that's exactly like Airbnb called VRBO.com that vacation rental by owner, that is the exact same thing. They, you go on, you book, book your couple of nights stay at a place, it's somebody's house or it's not or whatever, and it's the same thing. The question is, do they have the built-in TOT tax?
Yeah, I don't have any idea.
And we don't know.
That's fair.
Okay, let's have a public comment on this.
Hello, Anna Lainey. By coincidence, I just finished doing two years' stand as a landlord for homaway.com. I was in Ashland and I will tell you frankly what I did. I, and this is what you do, especially if you have a large house, is you divide it, which I didn't get away with because they're savvy, they're not big town people where they've lost contact with their home. They knew, well, I don't know if they know that I subdivided, but I wouldn't live in it and have it rent it out. Well, I actually, it was really interesting. I ended up doing a 30-day, which is legal, 30-day rentals. And that would be good for fishermen, because we always have fishermen here. But I got caught virtually very nicely. The city manager called me because someone turned me in because I was online. Homaway.com, which was VRBO, they, I don't know how, what their relationship was, but they're pretty much the same company. And Airbnb would be the same. I didn't pay taxes in the 30 days and I should have, I was supposed to sign up as a bed and breakfast virtually. And those are the people that caught me and turned me into the city. It was a nice, it was nice, I mean, because I just gave in right away because I thought I could sneak into the radar. Because I wanted to, because I live here, you know, and I wanted a place to stay there and have my rental. It didn't work, but the 30 days was great. I mean, my rent was really nice. It was just hard on me to change tenants all the time, to keep control. And the one across from mine, and this is, Miss Shanta could be a very much a test case. And how, it is also how do you want your neighborhoods? That was the bottom line in Ashland, was many people wanted to get their single-family neighborhoods and the bed and breakfast people were very cutting edge. They knew they had to pay taxes. They all paid taxes and that's why I would have got caught. I mean, I was in the wrong neighborhood. There are a lot of different issues. I think it's the quality of life that we want and we have the fishermen traditionally and we are a vacation town. But there was, and if you get your fees back for monitoring the people around town, because we're a tech society, then you, then the city can get paid back as far as having someone to monitor it. You know, I really believe in the ability to fees in if you're going to have rules. And I know that it's hard to have rules, I know, but I think you kind of have to. I eventually sold because it was a lot, a lot of work. And people don't do that work like I did, you know, so they just leave it. So thank you very much. I just thought that I could put my bill stereo. I don't have that anymore.
Okay, is there any other public comment? All right. I don't have any real great ideas on this other than I'd love to direct staff to at some point look into how we can collect as much of the TOT from existing Airbnbs and VRBOs as possible. You know, if we could have some sort of metric as to, okay, there's 57 listings in the city and we have, I don't know, let's say 10 people are paying, then we can at least notify the other ones that they need to be paying. A baseline type of program for that. And with regard to the other piece of it, if we want to look at any zoning changes, I would suggest that we, we have the planning commission look into this.
Well, I'm in favor of having the planning commission look into it because all the little cities that I talked to, it just blew up on them, just like that, it just blew up on them. Anaheim is particularly having a major problem on this and they're not even a small city. Do you have to take out a business license to...
Yeah, we can have staff look into, do some research on the different websites and try to see what's out there.
It's really easy.
And look at...
One of the companies even sent me who in the map for Dunsmere. Because I was talking to them, because right now it's such a problem for so many cities. The coastal ones, the mountain ones, anywhere near, like Anaheim, the companies are forming to do revenue audits. And I happened to talk to one and when I came back, there was an email from them and they listed exactly who need their offer at Dunsmere. So it wasn't easy, it wasn't hard to find, but I just didn't have any information as to whether they actually need to get a license for this or... I just wanted, you know, some discussion around this because it may just totally, well, I know that it affected Ashland because I remember reading about it and they had to pass ordinances in sort of Mount Shasta.
Mark, did you get a chance to finish your thought there?
We could direct staff with council choose to look into surveying what we know on the internet and then to match that up with the business license we have on file and those that don't have it, we can do a job to.
And is, do you know offhand if a property wants to rent out or a property owner wants to rent out part of their property on Airbnb or something like that, what they would put down on their business license application? Would it just be like under lodging or something like that?
I don't know.
Because perhaps we need to, if we're, perhaps we need to add a short-term rental category, might be easier to track if it's a separate category from general lodging.
Sure.
Like hotels and things like that.
Right, just hotels and hotels.
Hotels, hotels. So maybe we ought to put a short-term rental category on there and then we can have a separate database of all the registered short-term rentals in the town and easier to track the TOT collection. We're going, sorry Anna, we're going to move on from this topic. Thank you.
Yeah, my thoughts on the issue are we should capture the revenue that we expect to capture from hotels and motels in the area. As far as using private homes, again, I support the idea of using private homes where rooms are being rented out. With regards to vacation homes, people who bought vacation homes who may want to buy a vacation home and then have, you know, paid for it by renting out, that's kind of a gray zone and I'm not sure how to deal with that. But my biggest concern, and it's a concern that is very, very compassionate about, is that right now we need families. And I've read also, as Marius has read or heard about different cities where all of a sudden they're kind of like transformed overnight, people realize, oh, there's a good little community and people realize they can make $5,000 a month without doing anything. That's the type of property, I really don't want to encourage, I don't want to encourage the sale of that, so I'd be open to the idea of an ordinance that would somehow control it. But as I understand it, the way that ordinance would be, would be that within a particular area, you have to have a primary residence and if not, then you wouldn't be allowed to have, you know, purchase a property for that. But all those are issues that I guess would be best dealt with by the planning commission, so I would be in favor of that.
I think, yeah, I think we should have the planning commission look at that specifically. I mean, you know, again, I'm a little wary of putting those types of restrictions on people's ability to buy property. That being said, you know, if, okay, so like the house across the street from me is owned by a lovely couple who lives there half the year. They summer there and they don't winter there. And if they were, if they wanted to rent that out for half the year, you know, once a week or a few times a week and they were making, let's say they were making a thousand bucks a week on it. You know, and let's say, it's the scenario you're talking about where they purchased the home for that specific case. And then let's say that they just stopped summering there too and rented it out during the summer because they thought they could make more money. You're right, we wouldn't have the family living there that we potentially could, but the city would be collecting a lot more revenue than if a family weren't there potentially. We'd have tourists in town all the time. It's not a, I don't think it's a zero or a one, you know, it may not be 50/50, but it's, it's a lot more TOT revenue. We get no TOT revenue if it's just a, if it's a house there. I think all of that should be looked at, you know, I mean, and it might be a big problem and it might, it might be a very, very small problem that, you know, is a handful of homes in our community, but I think that, you know, let's get some numbers behind it and kick that specific issue that the planning commission for their recommendation.
So how do you want to handle this? Promotions or dispositions?
Consult your real estate law. Let's see, oh, you guys come, bye.
Let's see, I think we should just direct staff to conduct an audit of the, of the short-term rental properties and develop a plan for like the appropriate TOT.
So that would be a direction, but do you want to go for a motion on not setting this up by the commission?
Well, let's get to that one at a time. So is everyone in favor of, yeah, what I just said? Okay, so directed and, and I think there's a direction as well. Direct staff to have the planning commission look into the other aspects as we discussed.
As far as taking that specific to the planning commission, is there a sense of what you want them to look at?
Yeah, specifically the ordinance passed by Mount Shasta recently to look at that as a potential model, because I believe that would be a zoning change or a land use restriction.
Right.
And so, you know, basically I want the planning commission to hold some hearings and get some input from the public on what, what the community wants to see with regard to these issues.
Can they take a look at the positive and negative effects of people like how they will be replaced, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So directed?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to...
Your fees.
Our final item of the evening, which is 13F employee legal fees.
Mark?
Okay, this is an item that has come before the council, I think what I just started after April or early May, in regards to a civil case that has to do with a city employee and the representation of that employee being something he can't afford, that has to do with an activity that took place at work. And as the state is going after this employee on a civil matter that has to pertain to actions from employment. He is currently, he came back today from a court date that was between the attorneys and the judge, which he is. So they're still working issues out and it's, it's one of those things that isn't quite settled on how they're going to go about it just yet, but the time that is on retainer, essentially the money that we have to help them with the legal counsel has been expensed. So the attorney has reached out to see if the city wanted to continue to assist with his legal counsel. He has noted that there's two people that the, that are being prosecuted or that are up for prosecution and he is representing both individuals on this case. So that actually helps both individuals in that a lot of the stuff that he's covering is split 50/50, so it's actually making the cost less, so it's a little more beneficial. So the recommendation that they, that they asked for is to, for the $5,000, what as an option, I would ask for the council to consider if you're interested in pursuing this was to look at $10,000. We would only send the $5,000 in for retainer, but if that is depleted, then we would not have to come back to council to do another $5,000, which I think will have, that $5,000, the first $5,000 will be depleted the way things are going.
If I ask a question that's inappropriate, just don't answer it. But can you tell us what the city has expended so far?
Well, when I first got here, I came to the council and asked for $5,000. I was back in, like I said, I think it was late April, probably second meeting in April. What was done before then, I'm not sure. I don't know if Julie is aware of it.
I believe it was $5,000 initially as a retainer as well.
So this is just the second time that we've been asked?
This would be the third.
Yes, third time, the retainer and then $5,000 in April and this would be the third.
Was it a retainer $5,000?
I believe so, I'd have to confirm.
So if this is, this is accurate, then there's $89 left to the retainer and then they spent roughly $10,000 to this point. Okay. Is there any, I haven't been briefed on the case, the particulars of this case, I don't know if any of us have, in any, is there any indication as to where we are in the process? It's going to go to trial, is that right?
It's what it looks like. There was, there was an expectation that it was going to go to trial on October 2nd was the date that was set to go to trial. But after today, they, the attorneys got together with the DA and the judge and they were looking at reevaluating and possibly reconsidering how they're going to proceed.
Okay.
So they're going to come back on October 2nd to reevaluate what their recommendation is going forward.
Okay.
So they were going to go to trial, jury trial on October 2nd. That right now is postponed for them to go back and research and come back again on October 2nd to see what, if that's still your recommendation. The hope from the defense, maybe in our employees' representation, is that they're hoping to get the case dropped.
Great. All right, are there any other questions before we have public comment?
No other questions.
Open the podium for public comment. Anybody know what time we're down to? I apologize, sorry. Okay, we'll close the podium. Bruce?
There's been a lot of talk on forums, on Facebook about this case and about water in general. And without getting into details, what I have been briefed on, my understanding is, is that this, and this is backed up by...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, briefed not by anyone involved in this case, correct?
No, no, just a general understanding of the case. It's my understanding, and this is backed up by Assembly Mendali's letter at the time, that this is an improper approach to this problem and that it's outrageous, but in general, my view is that this is a valued employee. I don't believe that there was any malice or any whatever involved, but I do believe we should support him and so I'm in favor of at least the $5,000 and I'm open to the idea of ten.
Of course, I agree that this employee, in the course of their duty, is most certainly not doing anything that they thought was wrong at the time and concur that. I hope that the DA would see fit to, to try a different approach in these matters. Obviously, water quality is extremely important to us as it is a statewide issue, but I don't think that there was anything, that like you said, I don't think there was any malice in this case. That being said, let's just, let's just do the $5,000. I get the, I get the, just come back to us if it needs to be more, but this council has oversight of the money and I would like to just do the $5,000. So I'll entertain the motion for the $5,000.
I move that we, to authorize... I move that we authorize the expenditure of five thousand.
Are you going to allow me to make any...
Oh, I'm sure.
You just made a motion, and I just don't know, you know, in the course of this is to win, I'm allowed to allow, allow to make, you know, express an opinion, of course.
Marty, of course, you can express an opinion, however you interrupt Bruce's motion, so I'm gonna let him finish.
No, that's okay, I'll pass on, because I was looking to see if she wanted to say something, and that's why I asked her. So go ahead, please.
Well, I agree with both the comments that both of you made, I think this is a test case that the DA is trying, I think the water board is throwing their weight around, I certainly support an employee that was doing their job. I disagree with you, Bryce, I just assume, you know, go for the ten thousand. I know what happens in, you know, court cases, they get dragged on, not through any fault of the defendants, you know, the judges don't always make their case, or don't make their time, and they postpone it, it still ends up costly. I would just assume, you know, give the city manager the ten thousand leeway, and, you know, let us know when the first five thousand has been spent.
So I would now move to authorize the expenditure of ten thousand for the defense of city employee Ronald LaRue by attorney firm, Mortgage Law Office, Inc.
I accept the motion.
Again, I think, I'm not gonna vote in favor of that motion, just because it gives us an opportunity to discuss this publicly, if we have to come back for more money, if we don't have to come back for more money, then we might not get another briefing on this. I think it's in the public interest to know when we authorize more money for this and to bring more awareness to the issue, in a way that we actually can, and it's not discussing the specifics of the case. We haven't had any closed sessions to discuss this, and this is really our only opportunity to discuss it. If we think that there's gonna be another five thousand depleted, then I'd love to get an update on the case when we have to authorize more money than that. I understand legal fees are a lot, and if there's any speculation that not authorizing enough money would somehow hinder the case, like the attorney's gonna stop working for the defense, then I would certainly be fine with authorizing more money, but I'm not in favor of the ten thousand if it's only just so that we don't have to come back to the council again. That's why, just wanna make sure that that's clear. There's a motion in a second, so unless there's any other comments on the question?
I'd like to hear more from Rashanta in terms of her response to that.
My reasoning...
Do you want to decide and vote?
My reasoning on that ten thousand, I also put a caveat in there that the city council would be notified when the five thousand was extended, and, you know, so we know where we stand. We are not allowed to discuss the case, any parts of the case, whether it's open or closed, so it's, you know, it's just authorizing that in good faith, you know, we have an employee that did his job, we are now standing by him and defending him until the end, and...
Okay, so my comment then, I'm following up with that, is that I would like to make it very clear to Mr. LaRue that we support him, so I'm ready to go with the motion as it stands.
Okay. Call of love, all in favor?
Aye.
She has a vote.
Oh, we're all, thank you.
Council Rashanta?
Aye.
Council DeGooit?
Aye.
And you have a favorite?
Aye. Okay. Are there any other motions for this?
No.
Okay. Okay, that concludes our agenda tonight. Before we adjourn, are there any items that we want to bring to the attention of the city manager to put on our agenda for next time?
I do, I don't know whether it needs to be on the agenda, but I'd like to have it talked about. I did some research, and in the course of my research, I asked Julie a question, and Julie informed me that the protocols have never been finished or adopted, and I was wondering where we were on that, or if it's something that we should maybe pursue and finish.
It's an overview?
It's, yeah, basically, we drafted a bunch of protocols, if I remember right, Randy had some issues with them, we addressed some of those, and then he basically said, I'll, I don't mean to put words in his mouth, but I basically recall that he was gonna finish them, and then it never seemed to be the top priority, nor what I think is the top priority for Mark, so if we're gonna have some movement on that, we would probably need a volunteer group to reconstitute the protocols committee and go through the process again.
I thought you and Bruce were in the committee.
Actually, I was just a citizen at that time, a long time ago, with Josh and me.
And it's, and it's, the committee has been dissolved, so it's something that's important that should happen, not at the top of Mark's priority list, and I wouldn't put it there, but yes, I think we have a pretty solid document that we could perhaps adopt, but yeah, I mean, it's something that's just fallen off the radar, so.
Now I would just like to note to the city council that I'm looking to schedule some time where I'm gonna swing off probably for a day or two to work with our fellow works supervisor bill to, and also I've got a request in with Alessa, we have a fast approaching deadline to get the grant application for sidewalks, and I'm looking to just kind of lock myself up for a day off next week, but I am bombarded with a lot, I probably have a hundred and fifty emails I haven't gotten to from just coming back from a conference, so I've gotta work through that, but it's critical that I do kind of close my door for a while next week to get that application done.
The only reason to bring up the protocols is just because it didn't really come into my mind, Julie reminded me that we had never adopted them or passed them, so I just wanted to bring it up, and it's not high on my priority list, but I remember when we started all this, it was a big bruja, you know, in Dunsmere, and that's why we undertook it, so.
I mean frankly, it's a good sign that basic council decorum and protocols are not the issue of the day anymore.
Yeah, I remember, actually, I remember when I was involved in that early on, and it seemed that everything we were doing was aimed at one person.
So let's, the only other thing was, Mark had talked about, you know, we want to do some council visioning for the town, perhaps development of some sort of strategic vision, or at least set of goals for the next year, something like that, and I know that that's gonna play into our budgeting process next year, is that something that we can target in October, potentially?
Absolutely, that's my goal, is around mid to late October, so if I can get a consensus of what's a good day...
How about November? That gives you October to finish up, you know, get your schedule a little bit better.
I do wanna, if I need to, I'll push into October, but I really would like to get started, and at least I'll be able to outreach with the public to try to get them, as long as I can get the council set, I'd like to get the planning commission involved as well, and then start reaching out to the community to invite them to basically a town hall kind of...
Yeah, is there a format that you like?
It's, the room's a bit small, I don't know if we can do, depends on the turnout, maybe the creative center, where we would look at, you know, vision, vision, but it's to really set those, you really have to understand who your customer base are, the citizens, so what is it, what are we here to provide, you know, for the citizens, that's really an understanding of what their needs are.
So a couple of things that we've done since I've been on the council, one, we had a...
Town hall?
We had a...
Visioning sounds like a...
Yeah, it was sort of like, it was a facilitated meeting, town hall type discussion, where, you know, everybody put up their ideas on the board, and they're sort of all voted on and created somewhat of a consensus. If I recall, we spent about a thousand dollars to hire a facilitator to organize it and run it, and then the other thing was, we did a very similar type of thing where, but it was just for the council, and we had Ron Stock and Steve Baker, city managers in Warricka, and we come and sort of facilitated the discussion of the council, and that was really effective too.
I liked that one.
Yeah, and it was free.
I thought that was more attractive, actually, I thought that was more effective.
It was more focused, because it was just the council. So maybe, I would be in favor of some type of process that maybe culminates in that type of thing, but maybe is preceded by a couple of more community-oriented town hall discussions about things, so that we can vet through some ideas, but then, and then maybe go to like a council-specific workshop where, within the council, but you know, something that involves the community more, and then is one where the council, at the same event, I think can be a little bit less focused, so I wanna, I wanna have something as productive as when we did it with the two city managers, I think that could be like, you know, the end, the ending process, anyhow.
It seems to me that we invited the whole public for the one up at the elementary school, and our responses, as usual, very few people showed up.
The same fifteen people showed up.
So, I hate to break it to you, Mark, but this is not participating in the city.
Uh, Bruce?
Doesn't matter how many times you invite them, and you put it in the paper, and you, the same fifteen people will show up, but we'll keep inviting them.
Bruce? Yeah, I was just gonna say that my biggest concern is, is that if you end up with a small number of people, you know that you've got the numbers to come out of, but the one that they had at the elementary school, remember, they had a small number of people there and a long list of stuff, and it's not like you can say, well, it's two people voted on this, so that must be this is the priority of the city.
Correct.
The other thing that I think would be important is starting off with the council coming up to begin with, and starting the process, because in working with visions, as I've worked with in the Navy and corporate world, the important thing is to give an overarching sense of the vision, in other words, to say something like, in five years, we want to imagine, what would be an ideal community, what would the things be that would make a part of that, rather than just saying, okay, what would be nice about a city, it's the idea of trying to come up with something where they could fit together. Those are my thoughts, and I know that it has to work its way through you and everything else, but I just wanted to keep those in mind.
Yeah, and I'll just say, I think we should also recognize the limited resources and challenges we face, I mean, Mount Shasta has a beautiful strategic visioning document that they spent, you know, the better part of the year creating, and a lot of money, and, you know, assigned all of the different duties to the various departments and committees, and it's very comprehensive, I don't think that we have the resources to develop that type of document, I wish we did, but at this point, I think I should, I'd like to just direct Mark to come up with a process that he sees fit, and bring it to us.
Well, let me explain what I'm looking at doing, the vision, much like what Bruce was saying, is really, where do we want to go, you know, what is the vision of Dunsmere? We had the beautification committee, so we know that this downtown is important, but a lot of times what gets forgotten is that we need to have an infrastructure to keep what's above, you know, functioning as well. So, but we have that vision, so that we can always say, you know, is this, is our goal is going to help support the vision, right? The mission is really, what are we here for, you know, what is our function as a municipality? So when you have your vision, you can kind of start trying to bring things back around and say, this is where, you know, we want to support getting there, and then when we get to the goals, and Ron and Steve are two amazing city managers, so we're fortunate to have them nearby, and I'm working with Bruce too, and we're fortunate to have them here, what I'm looking at doing is taking most likely what they did, but tying that into a budgetary kind of process, you know, and we're looking at, okay, we're gonna have these goals that are going to be focused on getting us to the vision, but we only have so many dollars, you know, we only have so many hours, you know, in sense, resources. So this is where it gets tough, and this is really where I'm hoping that we get the public to come in and to understand, just like they're struggling at home, you know, what is it, what's most important to them, do they go on vacation this year, or do they, you know, have the money to repair a car? These are the same things we have, we have back roads that are falling apart, we have the same types of issues on a bigger scale, so it's, I'm hoping that we get our shareholders, being the citizens that's here, to come in and say, where do they want their money spent? So it's gonna be a tough budget here, but we, I'm hoping to identify the issues and focus the money that the limited resources, people's time, and the funds that we have coming in, to balance the budget, and then focus the other limited resources that we have in towards what goals we want to accomplish. So there's gonna be a lot of things, we're not gonna be able to do the goals that we want to get done, but we can at least say with an open heart, we're doing the ones that we feel are the most important, not giving up on the other goals, but focusing on the ones that are going to help get us to our vision.
So you're gonna look at me till late October or something?
Just getting it started, you know, what I'm hoping for is that we have a set of goals primarily in line for next year's budget, so definitely we start working on the budget in March, April, actually, February to March.
Could I ask that you kind of give us a sense of, if it could work out perfectly, what your schedule would be, what would be taking place between now and June 30th, so that we could all get a sense of your vision of how the process will go?
Sure, I was looking at sometime mid to late October as getting the first visioning and mission, and probably kind of getting, doing some research, and having some ideas out there to help.
Get a good market in the city, but to...
Yeah, yeah, and just say, okay, let's, here's kind of the spices, you know, to help, you know, make the recipe, to figure out how we want to develop these things, so we're not just going into this in coal, here's some samples other cities have, and things like that, and then we have a workshop that we made October, let's say, where we look at developing a vision and mission, I think we could probably do that within one workshop. And then depending where we go from there, the holidays, it's either before the holidays or just after holidays, we have a mid-year review, and we start talking and go to it. And that's where, that's gonna be a lengthier discussion, that may be two meetings, you know, we start talking about goals, maybe it's to get a fine goals on the first meeting, and then coming back and saying, okay, here's all the goals, here's what we have, we can't do them all, so what do we focus on? And then hopefully we'll have a council consensus, what the main ones that we want to focus on, and we'll put them in the budget, and those will become the talking points when we have these budget conversations, where, how does that fill the vision, does that meet the goals, you know, we have these goals, we're gonna fund these first, so it's one of those things when you get these requests coming in, how does that get us to our vision, or how does that accomplish our goal, and if it doesn't, then it may not be something to find. Thank you.
What's the best way for us to, basically, I wanna see if we can ask John Kenny to look into this receivership issue, is that something that's already in progress, or could we invite him, could we ask him to look at that and then invite him to kind of talk to us about that?
My thought on this, whether the council would like to do, is I want to email the attorney that we had at the conference, and kind of get him to give us an idea of what is it, what's a service that they provide. I'll talk with John Kenny as well, and see if that's something that's really worth as well, and then I'm looking at getting, it looks like a week from tomorrow, next Friday, I've got two managers, proofreading, that's one of the items I'm looking to bring, and see what, if they're interested as well.
Okay.
And I'm hoping to be able to bring information that I get from the attorney to talk with as a planner, and say, this is the kind of services they provide, and the reason I'm looking to do is, we've had this conversation, Mark and you and I've had this conversation as well, is to be really successful, one of the first things they said about Semir was, to be successful, you have to have the right home enforcement officer, it's something you don't skip on, you can't skip on home enforcement, so what we need to get somebody that is, of the nature that can process paperwork and deal with the courts. of the nature that can process paperwork and deal with the courts if it goes our part, due process, so it has to be somebody that's typically paid a little higher salary. To do that, that's where the cost sharing comes in. And the second part is, if we could do it as a region, we all share the same types of ordinances, so that the courts are familiar with it, the code enforcement person's familiar with it, the public becomes familiar with it across the whole county. It could be a very profitable thing.
Right. I mean, I'm particularly interested in the, if we need to make a change to our nuisance payment ordinance or whatever with regard to adding the language of the special assessment, other than lien, if that language is even in there. If that's an ordinance level change that needs to be made, getting the, you know, a regional consensus to do that in all the jurisdictions would be co-royal set. So okay, so you're gonna lead the city managers, I'm leading with the other mayors, we're talking about similar stuff, and we can be in there, and you're gonna contact the attorney?
Yes, I'm gonna send an email and ask if you're certain that you're able to help present the facts.
All right.
You were certainly, you were certainly impressed with that attorney, weren't you?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
We'll be there.
Second.
All right. Objections? Or adjourn?